Welcome to our, what month are we in? October Board of Education meeting. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul Adoprius. Here, sorry. Scott Latham.
Here.
Thomas Grattan.
Here.
Thomas Kennedy.
Here.
Brian Tobin. In the event of an emergency, all visitors are advised that they may exit this room from the one side door which leads directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobiles, since this may cause traffic problems and block incoming emergency vehicles.
Stand by one second.
Give us a second here. That brings us to our first hearing of visitors. At this time, we request questions and comments be kept to agenda items only. Does anyone care to address the board, the first re- first hearing? Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda, which includes the approval of our minutes of our regular meeting of September 25th. It also includes our financial matters. Included in the financial matters are our schedule of bills for September, the treasurer's report for September.
That treasurer's report will be next month.
Oh, that's the one, okay. Just the treasurer's, right?
Right.
Yeah, I did see your email, I apologize. The monthly budget status report for September, transfers, there were a couple of transfers, extra classroom activity fund, contracts with Matatuck School District for Special Ed Services for Paconic Community School and La Salle School. I just want a real quick look at the transfers to see if I had any questions, but you can see how organized I am today, so. They couldn't, all right, Mr. Shai drew off the hook, I can't put my fingers on them. Okay, also included in the consent agenda is a donation, I'll read this. Kate's Angels will be donating eight LifeVac devices to our district, four for each building. The LifeVac is a non-powered, non-invasive, single-use-only airway clearance device developed for resuscitating a victim with an airway obstruction when current choking protocols have been followed without success. Can we be sure we send a thank you to Kate's Angels for that? We're surplusing some Chromebooks, some outdated ones that we will auction, and some damage beyond repair. And it also includes our CS, oh no, there are no CSEs this one. So are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then, all business. Do we have any all business?
I think we have any.
Okay. Dr. Moore, superintendent's report.
So this month is school board recognition month. I know our school board asks me to never recognize them, but I'm going to anyway. The New York State School Board Association recognizes October 14th to 18th last week as School Board Recognition Week. It's a time to promote awareness and understanding of the important work performed by school boards. Public schools are truly the bedrock of the community and of our country, and it's our local school boards who play a huge role in setting students up for success. The commitment and devotion of countless hours to make sure our schools are helping every child learn at a high level is truly commendable. You make the tough decisions every month and spend many hours studying educational issues, regulations, in order to provide the level of accountability and attention to detail our community expects of themselves. It's not always to make difficult decisions, it's not always easy to make difficult decisions in the community you live in, but without those difficult decisions, we wouldn't be able to function. These are just a few of the important areas that you guys all focus on every year that we appreciate you for. You help in the development of a shared vision and the goals for the district. You ensure strategies, resources, policies, and programs align with our district's goals and our beliefs. You assess and provide accountability to everyone that works here. You support a healthy school district culture in which it is easy to work and to function as a student. You also evaluate the superintendent and ensure that we're looking for continuous improvement, along with much, much more. So at this time, I just want to recognize all school board members everywhere. It's a voluntary position that is, takes a lot of hours, and it is a thankless position in many ways, but when you sit there and you see kids walk across stage at the end of the year, you watch them perform in shows, you watch them compete at sporting events, play instruments in concerts, it's all really worthwhile, and you know, you should be recognized for the time and effort you put in, so thank you for it.
Thank you very much.
And then the second piece of the superintendent's report, we had talked about enrollment in the past, and I told you I'd bring it to this meeting. I'm gonna jump on the other side of the table, because my neck doesn't spin that much. So this is a chart, Tom, that you've seen before. You can see the 24, 25 here. It started off with a projected, and now we've put the actual in as of today. For those of you on the board that got the update last week, those numbers are slightly different than these, because our out-of-district students weren't in, plus we've had some ins and outs. So we're actually a little bit higher than we were. A week and a half ago, when I ran the first set of numbers and sent them to you, we were in the 630s, now we're at 641. The estimate was 638. If you add in the New Suffolk students that came, we're within two students of where the estimate was, so it really was pretty close. You know, the anticipated number for next year would be 611, 591, 554, then we kind of played off at that number and stayed there afterwards. Now, this is all predicting that we have kindergartens of 40, no other school districts want to send all their kids here, and our population stays fairly stable. It's easy to look at 7th grade and see who's gonna be in 8th next year, or 8th who's gonna be in 9th. There's always, it's always a little bit of a guessing game with kindergarten. I put in 40 for this year, we only have 31. Eric, if you could click on that next one, please. This is this year's enrollment. You'll notice our kindergarten is only 31 students. Our UPK is only 18, the lowest we've had since I've been here. Now, there's a number of UPK programs around, so there are UPK students that are in other programs that will come to kindergarten here next year, hopefully a lot of them, but you know, 40 might be an ambitious number for next year in kindergarten, just based on the four years of history that I have here. Either way, as you move them up, you'll see that we're playing off between mid-30s and mid-50s, really mid-low 50s in the elementary school. Up top, our two biggest grades will be gone in the next three years. We have two 74s. You'll see the ungraded high school and the ungraded elementaries, those are from our special ed programs. Those students could be, they could possibly be 20 this year, and they're gonna age out at 21. They could be 18, and they might be with us for three years, or they might graduate at 18. You know, some of our ungraded students graduate before they age out. You know, but those numbers, the five and the two, they were not in your report from last week, that's where the discrepancy was. But like I said, if you see them, you'll see that our high school is 334. Next year, 54 come up and 74 leave, so we're automatically at minus 20. We no longer get that influx in 7th grade that we used to get from New Suffolk, because those students are already here. But we do get ins and outs every year, so it's possible, you know, it's possible that anything could happen. Realistically, though, the expectation, if you click back on the projection, fuck it, I didn't realize you were gonna do that. You know, the conservative estimate is that we're down 20 kids for next year. And then the following year is a bigger drop, because we dropped in both, in two areas, coming into 9th and also coming into school, so. Now that's where we're at. It's a, we've been very, very careful. I know next month, someone asked for a workup of where we look when it comes to employees, and we're already working on that, because we have had a number of positions that we have not replaced over the last handful of years. We have also had a number of classes up here that were six-period people's schedules that no longer exist, and they're only fifth-period schedules, because we don't have the kids for them. And then there are also some positions that we have edited. You know, 20 years ago, we didn't have those ungraded students, because we paid $100,000 a student for them to go out of district. Now we have them in. So to do that, you have to hire two or three people. It's still a lot less expensive than paying $700,000 for them to go out of district, then transporting and everything else, and they get to stay in their home school. And sometimes they're in plays, and sometimes they're on sports teams, and so it provides value to all of us and to them, you know. So, you know, I will categorize all of that for you, and I'll put that into the superintendent's report for the next regular meeting next month. We started putting it together, when I say "we," I mean Patty, because she's better at it than me. You know, but if there are any questions?
I have one.
Yeah?
Do we know what impact the Paconic Community Schools had on us? Or is there a way to find out?
I can find out.
I mean, that's the difference in the community that I know of in the last, since last year.
The Sacred Heart.
The Sacred Heart building, yeah. I understand that there's a lot of students that go to, I don't know how many, I'm thinking of the kindergarten, like.
Yeah, I can find out.
Is it that low, because there could be, that they've chosen to go there? So I just think it would be, if we could find out.
Yeah. Could you make a note, Patty?
Mm-hmm.
We've spoken with them about different things at times. I don't believe there's ever been a year where we've had more than one or two come.
Well, they moved to Ketchikan now, so that's, you know.
They did.
An enticement for some parents that maybe didn't want to send them to Akleborg.
It's possible. I've spoken with their director, I can certainly reach out and try to find out. I don't, I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Okay. Just curious as to the impact that it could be having on the other districts as well, but I'm really just concerned about our district, of course.
Certainly, I can reach out and find out what the impact is.
And maybe none.
Yeah.
Maybe they were gonna go.
Could be similar to those other districts, you know.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So as our numbers go down, our cost per pupil is gonna go up. I mean, what are the challenges you see over the next couple of years?
Well, I think that, I think that financially, things are going to get very tight in the state, and I think that we're gonna have to look to try to, you know, we're gonna have to be as fiscally responsible as we possibly can, and then we're gonna have to try to work with our neighboring districts or other people in the state to try to continue to provide the programs that we have. We are sharing a teacher with our neighboring district, and we're going 50/50 on the teacher, so that, you know, we don't, when you get a part-time person, part-time people, for the most part, don't want part-time jobs. They want full-time jobs, and they get experience in part-time jobs, and then they leave. So we have gotten a person who's performing extremely well in both districts, and is a full-time employee for us, but then we contract out for them to work for another district part-time. We have, we talked with another neighboring district about combining classes and then busing students over for certain classes. So, you know, that's really, that's where I think we're gonna have to continue to look. Otherwise, ultimately, just numbers-wise, we're gonna lose programs just because we don't have kids in them. We've lost sporting teams in the last three years, that we were not able to field, because we just didn't have enough kids. And that will eventually happen with classes also, you know. Or you can't run a class with one kid, it's not a class, there's one student in there. And, you know, so the goal is gonna be, and we've had these conversations, and, you know, we've talked a little bit about the reorganization, regionalization push that's going on in the state. Hopefully, by sharing, which we've done for many years, we will be able to keep these programs in place. I think technology gives us a greater opportunity to do those things than we've ever had in the past, so that really would be the way that I think we need to look. For instance, Matatuck has joined our robotics team this year, and they have five students on robotics. You know, so now we're sharing with three districts instead of two. Our robotics numbers are what, you know, they were a little lower last year. They're now in the mid-30s, which is where we like to be. Where, if we didn't have them, we'd be in the high 20s, you know. And the truth is, as we decline a little bit in enrollment, their numbers will probably come up, because first year, it's, you know, first year it's a big ask to kids to say, hey, look, you're going, you know, people don't realize how much of a commitment robotics is. They'll be, they'll have more kids that will want to do it in the future, and that will allow us, between the three districts, to kind of buoy our numbers. And we're gonna have to do that in a lot of areas. Anybody else, any other questions?
Kinda, I, I'm really going off on a tangent, but it's just kind of a sign of where we are right now, you know, in this region. I mean, just, again, I have adult children, and one of them can't come back, because of just the cost of living here. I mean, it's a challenge, and this is one of the, you know, the impacts. You know, we're not replenishing the, you know, the youth to come in and be able to stay here, so. I don't know, I wish it was more like a holistic approach, you know, we could take with, you know, other stakeholders that would really see this as not just a school district issue, but really, you know, the community at large, so.
It's, uh, it's difficult with the design that we have in the state, independent, we have so many independent school districts. You go to other states, they're countywide, you know, state-run, but countywide districts. So, you know, they have 400,000 kids in the district, you know, and it does, in many ways, offer more opportunities. In some ways, you know, you want to be part of a technical school, you may have to travel an hour and a half, that's where the regional technical high school is, but, you know, it does definitely offer pluses and minuses. And the conversation has started in the state. I don't know where it will end, but I know that school districts in New York State are very territorial, and that is a roadblock to some of these things. We're not advocating or saying it's pretty bad, but that is a roadblock.
But that's the, the problem is, you know, as the, as I see it, as the enrollment drops, you know, you can, with attrition, you can, you can pare down your employees, but this building is never gonna be any less square footage than it is, and it takes a person X number of minutes to clean X number of square feet, and that will never change.
That's not, yeah. Yeah. Well, he, we closed schools, in a prior district that I worked in, we closed three schools, and we consolidated, and we did exactly what the state is looking at, and we had studies done that we paid for, and the estimates on how much we would save didn't take into account the fact that we still had to heat and light and maintain and all these, so it ended up being a fraction of what we thought the savings would be. It was not as measured, like you said, it's, it doesn't, you know, you can't just shutter it. You know, it doesn't work that way. It still has to be maintained, otherwise it becomes a liability and not an asset. And, you know, so it's never as easy as it seems to be. I do think that we have good enough relationships with our neighboring districts that we can start to look at ideas and areas where we can do some of those things.
I think also, like everything else in life, it's citrical, because I can recall when the elementary building opened, I was not on the board then, but it was packed. They didn't, they thought, oh, they didn't build a big enough building, we should have added another layer or more rooms, and now, look, it just seems like a few years, I know it's been more than a few years, so if we go back long enough, we can, you know, we've seen the rise, we've seen the fall. I'm not naive enough to say it, it'll stable, but a lot of it has to do with, be careful what you wish for, and the North Fork has become the North Fork, whether we like it or not, and it, much of it is out of our hands due to the geography in which we choose to live. And like you, Tom, my boys couldn't come back here, and it breaks my heart, because being generational here, and I just have to recognize that there are other really great places for them to live. I don't think any of them are as quite as great as Southhold. However, I think as a school district, we try and be as fiscally responsible as we can with our hands tied, and come budget time, especially this year, I'll ask for it again, is the state mandates are just astronomically, you'd be amazed, and we started a letter-writing campaign many years ago to the powers that be in Albany, saying, hey, you can't give us mandates without giving us funding, and they said, well, yes, we can, and, well, you know, you're, yes, we know, yes, we can, and we will, and we do, and they continue to do, as Dr. Moore just mentioned. We're looking at some real pain next year, if they're gonna cut like they threatened to cut, like they threatened to cut this year, and I have a feeling it's gonna be a little bit more than a threat this coming year. So we're gonna have to just be creative and be patient and keep doing what we do for the best interest of our kids, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take over your report.
No, no, not at all.
It's kind of a passionate thing with all of us up here, I think.
Yes.
Thank you for that. We'll continue to talk about enrollment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that brings us to personnel. I'll try my best not to mess these names up. Okay, we have some entering and some weaving. I'm not gonna go in any particular order, I'm gonna go in the order in which I can see it. Employees entering the district full-time permanent, we have Perry Nessie, who's a custodial worker. Was there a start date on that, Patty? Should there be a start date on this?
We are looking at November 1st.
Okay. I mean, we just probably want it in the minutes, so that. Employees entering the district full-time temporary, Alex Sinclair has agreed to be our NJROTC leave replacement effective September 30th, 2024 through December 20th, 2024. We do have somebody that will be beginning next semester full-time with us.
In January.
In January. Well, I'd say next, in January, sorry. And then we have Ashqua Chaudry, who will, Chaudry, who will be our math leave replacement, shall be replacing Mrs. Basso effective November 4th through April 25th, 2025, and we'll have a sub, you said, for the next week until she gets here, correct? And then we have employees leaving the district full-time temporary, Captain Brendan Kelly, NJROTC leave replacement resignation effective September 28th, 2024. And speaking of attrition and retirements, we have an employee leaving the district full-time permanent, Mrs. Patricia Millis will be retiring effective June 30th, 2025. I got all the addendums right, Patty? Then we have some part-time temporary substitute teachers, Matt Cream, Deborah Dibble, substitute teacher aides, Matt Cream, Brittany Hennessy, after-school activities, Sydney Khan, coaching JV boys' basketball, Richard Pisacano, junior high volleyball, Courtney Kane, and weightroom supervision, Will Fujita. Are there any questions about the superintendent's recommendations? Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppositions?
Motion carries. I'm gonna read these, because I think it's important that we get this in the minutes, and for anybody that might be watching it, I'll try and go as fast as I can that you understand me. These are our reserve funds that back in the budget season, we agreed to fund these reserves. How's that, Mr. Shai? Did I get it somewhere right? And you can speak to it at the end if anybody's got any questions. The first one is the capital reserve fund. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the district treasurer to fund the capital reserve fund previously established pursuant to 3651 of the education law, as authorized in the board resolution, resolution at the June 26, 2024 Board of Education meeting, in the amount of $950,000 from the unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2024. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Retirement contribution reserve, also known as the ERS. We didn't do these, I feel like I just read all these. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the district treasurer to fund the retirement contribution reserve fund, the ERS, originally established in 2007 pursuant to general municipal law 6R, in the amount of $160,000 to be funded from the unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2024. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The retirement contribution reserve, the TRS, be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the district treasurer to fund the retirement contribution reserve fund originally established in 2019 pursuant to general municipal law 6R, in the amount of $160,000 to be funded from the unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2024. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The workers' compensation reserve fund, be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the district treasurer to fund the workers' compensation reserve fund originally established in 2008 pursuant to general municipal law 6J, in the amount of $100,000 from the unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2024. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Repair reserve, excuse me. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the additional funding to the repair reserve fund authorized by the voters in May 2009, in the amount of $400,000 to be funded from the unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2024. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Employment benefit accrued liability reserve, be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the district treasurer to fund the employee benefits accrued liability reserve previously established pursuant to general municipal law 6P, in the amount of $75,000 from the unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2024. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last one. Unemployment insurance reserve, be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the district treasurer to fund the unemployment reserve fund previously established pursuant to general municipal law 6M, in the amount of $10,000 from the unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2024. Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. This is one way that I think shows that we're fiscally responsible in how we use our reserve funds, and how much we gave back to the taxpayers.
So we used about 800, a little over 800,000, is that right? Yeah. Yeah. So a lot of this is replacing what we used in this year's budget, and then, quite honestly, some of it is surplus that I wouldn't count on in the future, because we had different grant monies that we used that freed up some of this money, and because of the fact that we were concerned about difficult financial times and cuts, not just this year, but in the future, we didn't spend those, you know, we didn't spend the monies that were part of our fund, our general fund. We spent the, the money from the grants, and then we were able to put these into reserves for repairs and unallocated, so that this way, if money gets tight in the next few years, which we all expect it to, we will hopefully have a little more available to do the different things that we wanted to do. But we did, between the boilers.
I was gonna say, the boilers came out of the reserve fund.
The boilers came out of reserve, that was about $1 million, and then we spent about 800 and change on last year's budget. So the surplus that we have is about what we spent. We're replacing it, so that we can spend it again in the future. But I do have to make sure that everybody is cognizant of the fact that some of the surpluses we have had in the last two or three years were partially the result of the $2 million in grant monies that we had to spend. That money is now gone. Now luckily, our AC and ventilation system, tennis court, things that we're not gonna need to touch for 20 years, are what we spent a lot of that money on, so that should get us well past these difficult times, you know, but it's not gonna be there the way it was in the last couple of years, and that's an important thing. There were districts that hit that wall this year, and they let go of teachers, because they were spending money on current teachers, and then that money was gone, you know, so we're hoping that we will, we're diligent enough in where we put everything and how we used it, that it will last us through these difficult times. That's the hope.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Finance committee report?
Nothing, you just heard most of it.
Building committee report? Policy committee report?
Nothing.
Okay, then. We need a motion here. Our 7th and 8th grade students plan to take an overnight trip to the Ashiken Center located in Olive Bridge, New York, in the Catskills area. The trip will be from December 20, 2nd to the 4th, I was gonna say the 21st and 24th, 2nd to the 4th, the trip will be student-funded. May I please have a motion for, to approve this trip?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any new business, anybody?
No.
That brings us to our second hearing of visitors. At this time, we will entertain comments and questions about agenda items or any school items and matters in general. Anybody care to address the board? Nick, you want to talk to me? Please, come on up.
Hey, good evening, members of the board.
Hi, Nick.
And I was here last time, and I introduce myself. I'm a member of the anti-bias task force, and I'm the newest member of the anti-bias task force for the town. And Southhold, you're my district, I was appointed liaison. So I'm hoping that, a few things, and if you can get back to me on a few questions I have, because I'm finding my way through this. Regarding DASA forms, if someone reaches out to the anti-bias task force and who attends a school here, is there a form online or a way to access your DASA form? Because I couldn't find it when I, when I looked for it.
Yeah. If you email me, I'll, I'll send you the link.
Yeah. And is there just a coordinator, so in the future, if I have a question, you would be the?
Dr. Simonetti or I, yeah.
Okay.
I was the DASA coordinator in a prior district, as you know. So, anybody can contact me because I'm very aware of how it works.
And, and as you probably are aware, people, when they're in a situation like that, for a variety of reasons, they're not unsure where to go.
Yeah.
And sometimes we'll get a call at the anti-bias task force, and we want to make sure we direct it.
So I would say, yeah.
Because we also have to report to the Human Rights Commission, too.
So I used to get regular communication from the anti-bias task force, and it was for situations like this. It was either from something they heard or from someone who reached out to them. And they would do two things, which I asked you to do also. They would encourage the person to contact either me, the principal, whoever the appropriate person might be, depending on what was explained to them. And then they also, he used to shoot me, you know, an email or, or call and say, listen, I heard this, you know. And to the extent that I could discuss it with him, like if it was individual student information, I couldn't share that.
Absolutely.
But if it was about a rumor that he heard about something that was going on, or whatever it may be, then I would share all that information with him. It was, what was his name? The gentleman that used to come in? Gosh, I forget.
Mike?
Oh, yeah, Mike.
Do you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Domino.
Domino. And he came in multiple times, and, and we met. Some of it was through state reporting they saw, on state websites that they didn't fully understand. I remember going through the violent, disruptive and incident reports with them, which they have a new name now, but I went through all that with them and how they're filed, and what they're filed on, and what they mean, and how many years behind they run, and all those things. And so we met numerous times. So I would say that, what I would tell you is, encourage them to contact the, the building administrator or whoever would be the appropriate person. And then, and then if you also could reach out and let me know, it allows me to follow-up or investigate.
And here's the thing, I'm trying to get ahead of the curve because for, and some other districts.
Yeah.
You know, similar situation, but I wanted to make sure that if I hear anything, and since Southhold's my district.
I'd reach out right away.
I want to be able to immediately.
Helpful to us.
That's why.
Yeah. Even more important than being ahead of the curve, we don't want anybody feeling that they're discriminated against.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
So, if someone is feeling discriminated against, whether they are or they aren't, because having investigated hundreds of these in a prior district, there are times where they are founded, and there are times where they are not. Sometimes discipline is perceived as discrimination, sometimes discrimination is perceived as discrimination. So, whether they are or aren't, I wouldn't want anybody feeling that way. So if you hear or get any information about it, sharing that with me would be appreciated.
Well, and you have my word that this is something that I take seriously, and if we do hear something, obviously, we want to circle back. The, what I'm noticing, and again, I've only been in there, this position since April, people are unsure where to go, and sometimes they're hesitant to go to the place where it started, and that's why.
They could always reach out to me then, you know. And I also have to tell you that I, there were two times that I reached out to Mike because there were things that were discriminatory in nature. They were not necessarily DASA-related because of the balance power issues in the ranks. DASs are, DASA regulations are really quite limited, they're very tight. But there were things that we struggled in completely getting to change. So I actually reached out to him a couple of times to ask if they had thoughts or ideas on, on things that we could do to try to eliminate these problems from going on. So that would really be the type of relationship that we would hope to have, you know, a two-way one, where not just information sharing about what was reported, but also information sharing about how to try to make things better.
Absolutely. And I'm going to repeat something I said last time, that we're here as a resource in any matters related to diversity, equity, and inclusion, whether supporting ongoing initiatives, offering guidance, or simply being available for collaboration. We are ready to assist in any way we can to ensure all students and families feel safe and respected in our schools. So, you know, and I guess we're right here with, in terms of where we are with that.
Appreciate it.
And we do have some programs coming up that we will be sharing with you really soon, and hope that you like what we have to do.
Yeah. If you could, we could help, you know, like, the liaison shares with us, and we share that information, you know, so like, we can share that out through our social medias and through our parent square connections and.
And also, it may save me from coming out on certain nights to like a board meeting if I could just.
We enjoy. We sit here by ourselves, it's good.
Around the corner.
It's good when people come out.
Thank you very much.
Are you still teaching, Nick?
I am.
Wow. Yeah, you're playful. Thank you. Anybody else care to address the board? That brings us to our board member commentary. We always start with our student, seems like she's so far away down there. Ms. Cullen, what you got for us? Bring that mic right up. There you go.
I want to start off with Spirit Day was very successful, and I'd like to thank Dr. Moore and the rest of the teachers who are going and dumping.
They cheated. They cheated, by the way, and pushed the thing.
We did get some pictures of it.
Yeah, it was pretty fun. And then I want to congratulate all the sports teams that are heading to playoffs next week, I believe, or maybe the week after. And then, in two days, for Soho TV, we're filming our Halloween special. So that should be out next week, I believe. And then for Halloween next week, we're doing a Spirit Week. So Monday, we have Dynamic Duo. Tuesday, we have Rhyme Without Reason. Wednesday, we have Decades Day. And then Halloween costumes on Thursday. And then Friday, we're doing a Pink Day for Breast Cancer Awareness. And then the Fall Play is this weekend, The Games Afoot, I believe it's called. And then on October 29th, we're doing a Halloween movie. It's for, we're showing Hotel Transylvania.
Lots of stuff going on.
Yeah.
Thank you for sharing with us.
You're welcome.